I'd like to call the order of the Pleasant Grove City Council on this Tuesday, May the 7th, 2024, and welcome our four council members we have, and excuse Councilman Anderson, who is still out of the country, and welcome our staff that has joined us here this evening, and also our members of our general public, and also those who have joined us electronically and remotely. We welcome you all to our meeting this evening, and we'll start our meeting out with the Pledge of Allegiance. We've asked our Chief Ingerman to come forward and give that, after which Neil Winerton is our Public Director, will give us opening remarks. Chief.
Audience, please, drive. Repeat, Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to be here this evening. We are grateful for government, representation, and our voice to be able to be heard. We're grateful for those who serve. We are grateful for many volunteers. We're grateful for water in the mountains. We ask for blessings this evening. We ask for blessings that we can be guided in our thoughts, in our discussions, in our decisions. We ask for blessings for the fallen officer's family in Santaquin. We ask for blessings for all of us to be kind and respectful, and listen, and hear others' thoughts and opinions. We ask for these things and pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Chief. Our first item is to approve the meeting agenda. I don't think we have any...
No changes.
No changes, so council asks for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
Second. Councilmember Williams, a second from councilmember...
I want to go Jensen tonight.
It was Edgar Jensen, okay. I didn't know if you were...
Oh, it was, no.
I don't... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We will now move to our open session and invite anyone from our public to come forward and address the council this time.
Lon Lewis, I just want to make a few comments regarding the school board meeting and the representation from Pleasant Grove City at that meeting. I attended it, and I'm concerned that I'm not sure that we're getting representation to the citizens of what our desires are regarding the council's opinion in an interlocal agreement, which is what the reason for the meeting was. Has anybody thought what would happen if Orem decides to sign their own interlocal agreement without the other cities? Yeah. I think that's highly possible in the fact that three of their members were in favor of an interlocal, and Pleasant Grove was adamant of not signing one. And I think we all know the reasons why. The message that's sent, I think we also have to be concerned of the district and their lack of commitment. And we heard from two of the council, or the district members, where one was in favor of a east-west split, and the other one represented the west side and wasn't certain that they would get adequate representation. So I think there's a lot of issues. I don't know that we should have hastily given an immediate decision of no, that we wouldn't participate. We didn't get a definitive answer from the other cities, that they said that they would get back and determine if they would proceed. But I think it was short-sighted for us to be so deliberate and immediate that there isn't a need for. And I think specifically because of the lack of a commitment from the Alpine District and what their desires are, they're waiting for us to show our hand before they'll show theirs. And I'm concerned about that. A second issue is I think that the budget this evening should not be approved. We need to be concerned about our needs versus our wants, and there's a lot of fluff in the budget, proposed budget, of things that are not necessary. As things are increasing, costs are increasing, we need to be concerned about the budget. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Chad Hunsaker. 846 East, 900 South in Pleasant Grove is my address. I'm glad that the other gentleman spoke to some of the concerns that I had. I wanted to add a few about, there were some claims that Patience was prudent, but I feel, as he was saying, that there were some hasty decisions made to say, "We will not participate in an interlocal agreement under any circumstances without actually going into the process of studying those out." I mean, there's, it would be months down the line before a real decision would have to be made, but this council has put forth a dead-on arrival of their intentions or ability to give us, the citizens, the chance to vote on the proposal that we would like to create of a district. At this point, we're just ignoring what has happened in the rest of the district, where 10 other unanimous decisions were made by councils to form interlocal agreements, and with this hope, this idea that, oh, we'll be saved by Alpine School District. As you heard from the, excuse me, from the superintendent, they don't know that that's even possible. And as Senator Grover from the Utah Senate has said, "Interlocals will almost certainly have priority for putting initiatives on the ballot." This means Alpine School District is unlikely to have anything on the ballot. That's his opinion. He might be wrong. But just as you heard, nobody seems to really know what conflicting things will make it on the ballot or not. So I think that, I know this won't change anything, because you guys have all settled your minds, as you clearly said in the meeting earlier today. But I would be remiss if I didn't warn you of what might happen, is we would be left as the leftovers and have not had the opportunity and the chance to give our citizens the opportunity to choose and to speak our voice instead of what you have decided is your opinion would be the only option. And I yield my time.
Anyone else?
Did I need to say my address? Oh, okay. My name is Courtney, Pleasant Grove resident. I just want to speak to the humility of our city council, because I understand that this is unprecedented territory that we are in, and making a decision to defer to the school board and the school district, in my opinion, is the best thing right now, because they are the experts. They are the ones that we have elected to make these decisions in education for our children. So I appreciate that that is what I feel was kind of the vibe that you were giving at the previous meeting was, let's let them give us the information and then make decisions after that. So I just want to speak to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would you state your name?
Yep. My name's Tamara O'Bourn. I live in Pleasant Grove. I kind of wanted to just honor what Courtney said. There is a large group of us grateful for the decision that was made not to enter into local, interlocal agreement. There are still so many outcomes that we know could happen. And some of those decisions, we don't get to make. But sending the message that we want to stay together with the east and with Lehigh is going to be a really good thing for the campaign moving forward, giving their residents a chance to choose. As far as school districts and parents, we're all, we're scared and we're concerned, but we appreciate the idea that a local, interlocal agreement was going to send the message that we want to be in our own school district. And that's not necessarily the case for everyone, and it may end up that way. It may, it may play out like that. And we understand that, and we'll happily work with anybody that we need to. But as a parent of kids, little ones still going through, and as a teacher, I'm not speaking for the district. Somebody write that down. We appreciate the kindness and the friendliness that was in that meeting, because we're going to have to work with all those people, and we just care so deeply about our kids. So we just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Tamara. Thank you. Anyone else? I see no one else coming forward, so we'll now close our open session and bring it back up here to the front here, and move on to item number six, our consent items to be voted on this evening, which consists of A, city council minutes of our March 5th, 2024 meeting, our March 21st, 2024 special meeting, and our council minutes for the April 9th, 2024 meeting. And B, to consider for approval payment, number one, to Prag Hook Construction Incorporated for the Orchard Drive and Locust Avenue Safe Sidewalks Project. C, to consider for approval payment, one, to Geneva Rock Products for the 2024 pavement preservation project. And D, to consider for approval payment, number two, to J. Lynn Roberts and Sons Incorporated for the Boulevard Well Facilities Project. And E, consider for approval payment, number nine, to the B.D. Bush Excavation for the 1300 East and Utility Improvement Project. And F, consider for approval payment, number one, to Prag Hook Construction Incorporated for the 2024 C and G and sidewalk projects, and to consider for approval the payment reports for May 2nd, 2024. So with that, there's no discussion on those, so I ask for a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve tonight's consent items, as read by you.
We have, we have a motion by Councilmember Jensen, a second by...
I'll second that.
Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have no board commission committee appointments today, and also no presentations, so we'll move right into our one public hearing, number nine A, we have for this evening. Public hearing, Code Text Amendment, Section 10-18-2-B, Section 10-18-4, citywide, and public hearing can consider an ordinance 2024-11 to amend City Code 10-18-2-B Parking Design Standards and Section 10-18-4 Diagrams by modifying the depth requirements for parking stalls within the downtown village zone. And applicant is Drew Armstrong, and we'll turn the time over to Director Cardenas.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As you introduced this item, this is a Code Text Amendment, Mayor, and Council, so we are creating new law or new requirements for parking stalls. But before I start, actually, is the applicant, the applicant is not here today, maybe he'll come in later, but this proposal, or this Code Text Amendment, is only for one specific area, the downtown, and even more restrictive to the commercial portion of the downtown. Okay? If we take a look, that's kind of like a map of Pleasant Grove City. What's in green right there is our downtown area, but this only applies to the commercial mixed-use this area right here. Okay? So this is not a proposal for the entire city. It gets localized only on the downtown and only on the commercial mixed-use area. Okay? So right now, I'm going to show you now another image, and we're going to start our conversation from there, or discussion from there. This is our downtown. Okay? The requirements for our parking stalls, and again, this Code Text Amendment is not for the number or parking stalls required. That stays the same. Okay? So for example, if we require in a residential two parking stalls, that stays like this. Okay? We're not, or what the applicant is proposing is not changing the ratio of parking stalls provided or needed or required. What the applicant is proposing is to change the dimensions of a parking stall, when a parking stall is like, in this case, when they are like by themselves, and they're not abutting a sidewalk or a planter. Okay? Here's the requirements as how they are right now. Okay? Right now, or a parking stall dimension for head-to-head, parking stalls are nine by 20, nine width, 20 length. Okay? That's the requirement of how we have it right now. If someone's providing the dimension of a parking stall, as I mentioned, that is abutting a sidewalk or a planter, then the dimension for that is nine by 18. Okay? So again, Pleasant Grove City has the requirement of nine by 20, only on the head-to-head parkings that are kind of like in the middle.
Why is that, Daniel?
That's a great question. Why do we have it at nine by 20? Or why is there a reduction?
Why is it nine by 20 and nine by 18?
Okay, so...
My car doesn't change sizes when I decide what parking spots to pick.
Yeah, but have you, let's say that when I park right here, this is my limit. And when I park right here, like you guys can see this car, the nose of the car usually hangs up a little bit. That's, 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 no. But I'm also gonna, because the question I thought came from a different perspective, we say, "Why nine by 20?" Like, why do we have nine by 20? Why every other city has nine by 18, and why Pleasant Grove has nine by 20? Okay? A city code is written, okay? Usually, what we do as city planners, we check other cities, usually the cities that is closer to us, and then we pretty much kind of like try to align, or, I mean, for lack of a better word, to copy what we have in a city that is neighboring to us. Okay? Now, that's why a city is like start progressing, city starts developing, then the planners come back and say, "You know what? Actually, we have a determination on this, but we would like to change it." And that's why Code Text Amendments happen very often on jurisdictions or on cities. As you guys can see, I put a table on the, on the staff report, where I showed the cities that has still parking stalls nine by 20, and the cities that have parking stalls nine by 18. Okay? In good planning principles, right now, most cities, and I'm going to say 90% of the cities are nine by 18 regarding the location of the parking stall, regarding the location of the parking stall, they're nine by 18. Okay?
For commercial.
For, yes.
And residential?
You know, for mixed uses or commercial uses, and also for just the size of a parking stall. Okay? Usually, for a driveway, I'm requiring a driveway that is at least 20 feet. Okay? But in this case, we're talking about a parking stall that is like in a commercial, that is like painted with lines right there. So the applicant, again, is proposing the reduction of these two feet, okay, only on the downtown, on the downtown zone. Now, the cities that we have right now still that show in their code a requirement of nine by 20, those cities do not have a downtown. Okay? Now, as the staff receive this, and we start to analyze it and trying to study it a little bit, and say, "Okay, let's compare cities, let's figure this out," what the staff has found is that the reduction of 20 to 18 on the length of the parking stall does not have an impact on the parking needs for a site. What does have an impact is the number of stalls required. That does have an impact. The size from 20 to 18 has not. So again, if we go to the tables of cities that have gone through that process of reduction, none of us ever have driven to that city and be like, "I can't go to that city, because my car doesn't fit in that stall." But we usually go like, "I don't go to that restaurant, because there's not enough spaces for me to park right there." The other thing that I wanted to mention is that it's common, it's common for a downtown area to have even a smaller parking stall. So some cities like Salt Lake City, they even go to 16 to 17. They go smaller than that. Okay? However, we went through a similar process in the past. In 2000, let me see, I started working in 2016. In 2016, we had a requirement for the interchange sub-district. The interchange sub-district is what we have right here in this area by the freeway, everything that we have right here, where all the towers are built, St. John's Properties, and the future 40 acres that we're going to develop. In 2016, we actually went through a similar process when, or code says, "Hey, all parking stalls should be nine by 20." And personally, I remember going to Lehigh, for example, and taking a tape measure and go to the buildings and start measuring right there. And then I went to American Fork, and I went to Draper, and then I went to Murray, and I measured all the cities, and they all had nine by 18. I came back, I reported to the mayor and the city council, and there was a Code Text Amendment that reduced the parking stalls from nine to 20 by, sorry, by nine by 20 to nine by 18. So we have done that in the past. So every parking stall that we have in this area, for example, on the towers, all of those stalls right here, they are nine by 18. Okay?
That was going to be my question. So there's other areas in the city where we've already reduced it?
Yes, we did, yes. Now, again, staff will not recommend if we're going to do a reduction, for example, of a parking stall on the manufacturing zone. I wouldn't recommend it like that, or staff wouldn't recommend it on a, on a commercial use that require different type of vehicles. But in the downtown, it's a good planning principle to go to nine by 18. So there's not a negative impact, if I might say it like that. Okay? So this item was also, I took it to the planning commission, we analyzed it, we talked about it during the planning commission, and the planning commission forwarded a unanimous recommendation of approval for the proposed Code Text Amendment by the applicant Drew Armstrong. It's important to mention that, again, this is not a proposal from the city. This is not a proposal from staff. It came from somebody else, and what staff did was just analyze it, studied different aspects, studied different projects, and then the recommendation of staff is also a positive recommendation. Again, it's not the reduction on the number of parking stalls required, but it's a reduction on the dimensions of a single parking stall. Another thing that is important is that when I was talking to the fire department or safety or safety groups in our city, this distance between parking stalls, like this is from here to here, that's more important than the distance of the length of the stall. And that's being kept the same. That distance, the requirement in our city is 24 to 26 feet. That is the same.
Daniel, I seem to remember another discussion about this.
Yes.
When, when was that, and what was the item that we...
Yes, it was for the entire city. Then we tried to do it for entire city or for a bigger zone, which was everywhere in the Grove, and we decided not to do it. We decided only to do it on the interchange sub-district.
Okay.
Again, for example, right here, we're not applying on the entire downtown zone. So in the, in the buffer zone that is residential, we're still going to require the same stalls. This is only for the commercial area.
So we changed it, so we changed it for the Grove Zone, not the Grove Zone, the...
The interchange, not for the entire zone. We decided not for the entire zone.
Just for that development?
Correct.
And now we're proposing just for this downtown. Okay, all right, I'm good. Thank you.
So that's what the request from the applicant is, and that's the proposal, sorry, the proposal from the applicant and the recommendation from the planning commission is a unanimous recommendation of approval. And I need to make sure that I mention it again, and I'm pretty sure it's like, I feel like, how do you say this in English, kicking a dead horse? Yeah, I was going to say a donkey, but it's actually a horse. Okay. Again, we're not working, or we're not, the applicant is not proposing the reduction on the number of stalls, or even the reduction between stalls. Okay? It's the reduction of a single stall from nine by 20 to nine by 18. That's what I have, Mayor and Council.
Any other questions for the director? Okay, thank you, Daniel.
My pleasure, Mayor.
With that, we'll now open our public hearing, and on ordinance number 2024-11, invite anybody to come forward and address the council. I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our public hearing and bring it back up to the council here for any further discussion or a motion on ordinance number 2024-11.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt... How do I read this, Scott? Do I just, section 10-18-2-B?
Yeah, it's kind of separated.
And section 10-18-4?
Yes.
Yes.
And amend, and approve the ordinance 2024-11, and amend the City Code, Section 10-18-2-B Parking Design Standards and Section 10-18-4 Diagrams by modifying the depth requirements for parking stalls within the downtown village zone.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Williams, a second by Councilmember Jensen, and this will be a local vote with, starting out with Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Mayor, if it's okay, can we just do item 10B first, since Daniel's up here, he's got his computer hooked up, and then we'll do the budget after this.
You bet. So we'll move to our actionized ready for vote this evening, and move to 10B to consider for a request from Kevin Watson for commercial site plan for a drive-through restaurant located at 1720 West Pleasant Grove Boulevard in the Grove Zone, interchange sub-district, and back to Director Cardenas.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There we go. Oh, actually, I have a name right there.
You've been waiting how long?
Every, every time I go to Chick-fil-A, and I ask for something, or pay or something, and I talk to one of the employees, they always say, "My pleasure." And I thought it was one of the, the best ways to, as customer service, of the best ways to answer to a request. It's my pleasure, and I adopted it, and every time I present to you guys, I, and you guys say something, I would say, "My pleasure." And I think it's a, it's a great model. What we have right there, what I'm showing you right there is an aerial view of probably the busiest intersection that we have within our city. That's, this is North County Boulevard, and this is Pleasant Grove Boulevard. This is our interchange, it's just situated right here. This is the access to the freeway. And this, this corner right here, this is where the site plan is. Okay? Actually, this is a map that I was drawing separately, not for this item specifically. I drew it for something else. But this is the location of the drive-through restaurant that is being proposed. Okay? Very important situation with this proposal is the parking. So staff dive into the parking with the applicant, and we have two, two different parameters for requirements for parking. One of the parameters is depending on the number of sits that a restaurant presents, and another one is depending on the gross floor area of a restaurant. We don't count the restaurants, we don't count the kitchen, we don't count the front counter, but we count the area that actually is going to be used. And when we calculate that, our calculations came around 37 parking stalls if we use the parameter of just the sits, and about 45 if we use the parameter of gross floor. But when we were working with this project, and we realized that the applicant was proposing 62, so it's exceeding. And that's important for us, because we have requirements, but if an applicant knows their market better, in all cases, or parameters, is when we have a requirement for parking, we don't say, "Hey, for a beef restaurant, we need this, and for a chicken, we don't need, and for soda, no, we just say restaurant in total." Okay? But it's important, I think, when applicants know their market, they know their needs, and they go to their requirements, exceeding the requirements of the city. That's always, that's music to my ears. Okay? What we have, and I have an image right here, that's the zone, of course, it's a permitted, permitted use in the zone, and that's the site plan. Okay? As you guys can see also, and it's in the site plans that we have right here, this type of restaurant, it usually requires a long drive-through. Okay? And we can see that's one of the longest drive-throughs I've seen for a restaurant. It is huge, and it's a two lanes, and...
It is huge, and it's a two lanes. And what I'm trying to say is that the applicant proposed a, the dimensions, the requirements meet and exceed the ones that we have within our city. Okay? So north is that way, sorry, north is this way, pointing this way again. This is North County Boulevard, Pleasant Grove Boulevard is right there. The main access is going to be through right here.
Oh, you're right.
Through this lane right here. Here's the landscape area, and it was important because when we talked to the applicant, we know there's going to be a extension of North County Boulevard. So this road right here, that is, this actually is the east side of the place. We know there's going to be an extension, and we even took that into consideration. We talked to UDOT, we know how much they're going to eat up once they increase the width of the Boulevard, and we even took that into consideration. So even we're like, looking into the future for this, and it still meets the requirements. You guys can see the, it's fully landscaped on the side, and the drive-through doesn't just abut just the sidewalk, but we have the drive-through, and then we have landscape, and then we have the sidewalk. Finally, I, see if I have a, there you go. This is some elevations for the building, and I'm pretty sure, like, we know this place, and we want to, this is a good opportunity, actually, to know that this is, I mean, this is the final approval of a site plan. After this, they have to apply for a building permit, so depending on what the approval, what the, yeah, the approval from the city council is, we can start working on a building permit tomorrow. Okay? So the recommendation from the planning commission is also a recommendation, a unanimous recommendation of approval for the site plan in the corner of our most prominent corner in the city, if I can say it like that.
Thanks, Daniel.
Any other questions for the director?
Frosted lemonade. Pete shakes.
No, this is, this is great. This is great, great work, Daniel, thank you.
Thanks, Daniel. So if there's no other questions from the council here, ask for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion for a request from Kevin Watson for a commercial site plan for a drive-through restaurant located at seventeen twelve West Pleasant Grove Boulevard in the Grove Zone interchange sub-district.
Yeah, we have a motion from council member Jensen. Do I have a second? Council member Rogers, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We look forward to this new restaurant coming through, so speed it up a little bit, Daniel.
Do we have the, is the applicant's here? Mayor, can we have, can we quiz them? Is that okay? I know it's out of protocol, but yeah.
It's not out of protocol. Okay. I'm just, I'm excited.
Give us a timeline.
Timeline, I think we're thinking spring, summer next year.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's coming as fast as we can move, that's for sure.
Invite us to your ribbon cutting. We'll be there.
Deal.
We'd love to promote you.
Absolutely. Yeah, I appreciate it, and we are very excited to be coming in and be on the most prominent corner in the city and.
Yeah, is that why you chose Pleasant Grove? Was there a specific reason?
You know, we have a whole real estate team that makes really smart decisions about where they choose to place restaurants, and I think they made another really great decision here, so.
Very good choice.
Are you a franchisee or?
No, so I work with 4G Development and Consulting, so we're consultants for Chick-fil-A.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome, we're excited to have you.
Awesome, my pleasure.
Thank you.
I look forward to not having to drive to American Fork to get my real chicken fix, okay? Okay, we'll go move back up to ten A and consider for adoption Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash twenty-one, adopting Pleasant Grove City tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, which includes a comprehensive fee schedule and providing for effective date. And we welcome Director Roy back.
Wow.
Where'd she go?
My same old place.
Just look at her tan.
Mexico, Hawaii? Mexico? Hawaii?
If I remember missing, that's where we were.
Or at work, one of the two, right? The packet, Wendy put it out yesterday, and then we made a change. So this has the change in it, but she put the change out in the Dropbox, too, for everyone's information. So I'm not going to go through this whole document, I'm just going to share a couple of items that we've talked about numerous times. But on page three of the document, it's kind of little after I printed it, but that's just a consolidation of all the revenues and expenses, if you just want to look at a summary. So that's in there for you. And then page four is just a little bit of an executive summary, just high level of some things that we did, some of the revenues, some of the fees that we're doing, some of the operational expense changes, and then a summary of capital project dollars. We have general fund of almost four million, road funds of almost six million, and then enterprise funds of over six million that we're budgeting in two thousand and twenty-five. So just a summary there. One pager, which nothing's changed, that's page five from what you've seen. So just some of the things that we've talked about. Anyone have any questions from other meetings? That's kind of stayed pretty standard with the.
What was the change that you said was made?
Oh, we're going to talk about that. That's the, it's going to be our last page, but we're going to talk about the.
Like the last page of this thing?
Yeah, the utility.
Oh, okay.
The utility rate.
Oh, was it the TSSD?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to talk just a little bit about that. And so the rest of the document, until we get to back there, is just more detail that you haven't seen. You're going to see a revenue, and then you're going to see the expenses in the general fund, and we show salary and wages, benefits, and then operating expenditures. And so you're going to see that for all the divisions in the general fund, and then one for every one of the other funds that we have. Some of them are pass-throughs, there's one for Class C roads, there's one for transportation utility fund, and then there's one for all the enterprise funds. When you get to the enterprise funds, there is detailed projects that equal up to that six million dollar amount that I gave to you. And then as far as the general fund goes, that we call the one-time money, you've seen this numerous times. This is our, that's the three point, that's page twenty-five, but you've gotten that before, but that's also in there.
I appreciate you telling us where these pages are.
Yeah, so there is a table of contents, but just kind of highlighting and kind of what's, kind of through the document.
So it's all familiar as we've reviewed it over the course of the last couple of months, but it's easy to find it and make sure.
So let's talk about something that came up. So we have some proposed utility increases for the culinary water and storm drain.
Are you looking at a page?
That's last page, page forty-nine. And.
TSSD stupid thing.
So those are, it's not, it's about what CPI is to keep us, because as we know, our operating costs are increasing, and so trying to keep those very minimal. But as you see, the sewer, we're looking at nine dollars and forty-five cents. I know that you guys talked a little bit about that, and we just wanted to clarify a little bit. So TSSD is actually passing on a forty percent increase to us, which equates to a hundred thousand dollars a month. So we need to generate one point two million dollars that we're going to be paying to them, and so that's the need for that increase. So on the utility bill, there's actually three line items. One is the base fee, which is what the Pleasant Grove keeps for our other operations. We don't just have TSSD, we have employees, and we have other needs there. And so we charge a monthly base fee of eighteen fifty-nine. And our proposal is, is that we'll keep that, we won't be doing a CPI increase or anything. We're going to keep that at eighteen fifty-nine. We feel like we can keep our, that will help us, we'll be okay, we have some fund balance, those type of things. The monthly TSSD base fee, we're going to leave at eight dollars. The change that you're going to see is on the usage fee. We're proposing that we move that from two dollars and thirty-two cents per thousand gallons to four dollars, and that's where a lot of the cost is coming from. And so that's our proposal, and that's on page forty-eight, if you want to look at that in detail. That's our fee schedule, and so you can see the utilities there. And so I don't know if we, anything else wants us to share on the TSSD?
Yeah, we talked.
Yeah, it's pretty substantial, but like I said, Neil and I looked at a couple of months' bills, and it's about a hundred thousand dollars that's getting passed us.
It's what happens when an organization doesn't raise the rates.
And they started that, they started that increase in January. So January through June, we'll be using, yeah, we'll be using some of our fund balance to cover that until we adopt the fee schedule. So just that they've already passed that on to us.
Yeah.
So for my benefit, did you consider raising the TSSD base fee incrementally and then also increasing the usage fee by a lower amount? And if so, why did you decide to put all of the increase on the usage fee?
I'll probably have Neil come up. Him and I have discussed that a lot yesterday and today, and the biggest, one of the biggest problems is that we've got to generate a hundred thousand dollars. And so he'd probably share a little bit about where the dollars actually.
So TSSD actually charges strictly by volume. So it made sense to put this particular charge on the volume. It's an operational increase, it's not for debt. Let's say that they issued a bond, and the payment was going to be consistent with a payment, we would probably recommend that to go on the base fee because that's not going to change, it's going to stay consistent. And so staying consistent with a utility rate, you generally want to charge more for those who use more, and so that's why we recommended it on the production rate. Does that answer your question?
It does. I mean, did you run any analysis on if we raised the TSSD by a fixed amount, could that have lowered the usage rate, and we could have still generated what we needed to to cover the increase?
Yeah, you have nine thousand accounts, basically.
Yeah, you have just nine thousand.
So that analysis is, but then again, you add that to the base fee, and you're going to be charging those who might use five thousand gallons a month, and they're going to be charged more incrementally when they're not producing anymore. So it made sense to put this on the consumption or production rate.
The output.
Yeah.
The other thing is, too, is we looked at, Jody, she's our utility billing specialist, we looked in the average residential customer is at six thousand gallons. That's pretty standard. You'll have a few, like Mike in our office, he, two-person family, he only has, he only pays one unit, so he, you know, he's not, if we change the base fee on Mike to generate some of that, I mean, he would pay, he would pay a lot more, and he's not doing that usage. So we're still, we just have to still find a way to generate a hundred thousand dollars a month. I mean, it's not that we couldn't, but.
In my mind, that's just a philosophical question, and what we're saying as staff is, we'd prefer to keep it on usage, we think that's the fairest way to do it. And we also know that as, our usage that goes into TSSD, if for some reason our usage goes up, but that base rate is set in, that we're not capturing that extra revenue that we need to pay because now we're paying extra to TSSD because our usage has gone up. And so it's, this ties it directly to usage, it just makes it easier for us to keep up if, for some reason, our usage goes up.
Yeah, both directions, really.
Yeah, down or up.
So the increase at our current usage is a break even, or does it create a surplus?
This?
Yeah.
This is, we're going to be breaking even to pay TSSD. Neil and I met again this afternoon. This will keep us, with what we have right now, we're barely paying, it's basically two point eight million in this current year, with doing what we're doing, that will barely cover, that's going to cover, and that's TSSD almost to the, you know, pretty close to the dollar.
Well, the intention is, is what they're charging us is what we want to pass on to our residents. If it says TSSD on their bill, then that's the money that needs to go to TSSD. Is that exactly dollar for dollar? I don't know, but that's what we're trying to accomplish so that, because when we, when our residents come back and say, hey, my sewer bill went up ten bucks, we need to be able to say, this is on your TSSD portion, TSSD's phone number is this, and here's their address, and here's when they meet. So if you have questions or concerns, that's who you need to talk to because we're just passing this through. This is not an increase that Pleasant Grove City is implementing. That's, that's, that's how I see it, anyway, as staff.
Thanks, Tom. Any other questions? I have one more. What do we do on, okay, North and Manila Pond, we have, we don't have irrigation, so we, they're irrigating with culinary?
We have a different culinary.
Okay.
There's a schedule for it.
Fee schedule.
Okay.
And just, you know, for future planning purposes, after we get a year or two of data on the secondary meters, it's our intention to do a fee study, and not just with the secondary, but across the board water sewer, and look at those areas again, since we need to look at that because they are irrigating, they have different tiers within the culinary schedule.
So is there a chance down the road we put two meters in at culinary and then a meter off that they're using for irrigation?
Off the stop and waste?
No, 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 we would, we would, if we put a smart meter in, we'd be able to tell what that irrigation difference is because we'd be able to look at their winter use and then, and then look at that differently.
Okay, that's kind of how you figure it, Daniel.
And we could establish separate tiers for that, to capture that. And that's our intention, is to look at that data in a couple of years and really do a full-blown rate study.
Okay, that'd be great.
You know, our rates philosophically, we got to cover our operations, cover our capital, cover our debt. And it's our job and my job to work with Denise to present the capital plan because the operations and the debt stays pretty, pretty consistent. And then when we have significant capital needs, we bring that to you and explain that out, and whether we bond for that or pay for cash, but that's our philosophy.
That fee schedule's on page forty-seven.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's lined out in there.
Any other questions? Thank you.
And the other thing is, is we are required to adopt the tentative budget per state code, so that's why we adopt it, and then we'll do a final.
And we amend it.
Yeah.
If I can just add one more thing. We have a RDA budget meeting as well after our council meeting. We were just reviewing, we have a local building authority now in conjunction with Health Center Theater. We probably need to do a budget for that. So we'll talk with Tina tomorrow when she gets in, but we might need to hold a quick ten-minute meeting later this week at noon time or something to adopt that. So just, that's a little bit of a heads up.
So is that moving the RDA tonight, or you want to go ahead?
No, we're going to do the RDA, it's the LBA, Local Building Authority, so we have actually three different tentative budgets we need to adopt.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash twenty-one, adopting the Pleasant Grove City tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-four, and ending July, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, which also includes a comprehensive fee schedule and providing for an effective date.
I have a motion by council member Williams, and thank him for that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Jensen, you guys are just right on it tonight. So anyway, so with that, I, it'll be a roll call vote here. Pull back up here. And we'll start out with council member Rogers.
Yes.
Council member Jensen.
Yes.
Council member Lamone.
Yes.
And council member Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, that finishes all our action items for this evening, and we'll now.
Should I make a motion to convene as the?
Yeah, we'll get that up.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to convene as the Pleasant Grove City redevelopment agency? Oh, do we need to adjourn?
That could be the same.
That could be afterwards, right?
No, 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 I think you had.
We can adjourn and then come back.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn. How's that?
However you'd like to do it.
We, we usually adj, we usually adjourn and then come into session as RDA.
Yeah, I think it's the same motion. You adjourn and convene as the-
Hey, I need a motion to adjourn from our council meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion from Councilmember Jensen, second from Councilmember Williams. And we're now adjourned back in as-
I'll make a motion to convene as the Pleasant Grove City Redevelopment Agents, Agency.
Okay.
Did we need to have a vote on that?
We don't have a vote on that. So we're, now we're reconvened. So you can go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, now I'll make a motion to-
Sorry, now the convening of that does not take a motion.
Yes, right.
So when there's a meeting and the mayor is introducing the agenda.
We'll now have-
Director Roy.
Director Roy, give us, before you do your thing.
Yes. All in good time.
Director.
So we've done this before, so we have the RDA budget. It's just a one-pager. They're all areas that are in our tax increment. And we have what used to be called the Hammond Project. We have the Grove Towers and 1300 West, which is DoTERRA in the CDA there. And so we receive the property tax revenue and then we pay that out based on the agreements that we have with those agencies. And so that's-
Is that, is that in the packet?
Did you get it out there?
Is it in the email packet or, because it's not in this, right?
No, it's not in the-
It's not in that one. It's a, if you guys want to pass this around really quick, it's just a-
Or if you want to make a, I don't know if we have a copy machine nearby.
Yeah, I got it.
As long, as long as it's in our, it's in the packet, packet, those email.
Yeah.
I didn't see it in there, but it's fine.
Yeah, so like it's just a one-pager and just that information out there.
Okay, no worries, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Okay, no, excuse me. And that's what we've been cussing, and I'll call you board members. Okay?
What you don't want to be.
So anyway, if there's nothing else from the board, I ask for a motion.
Okay, Mayor, make a motion for adoption of Resolution 2024-01, RDA, adopting the Redevelopment Agency RDA tentative budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
We have a motion by Board Member Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Williams. And we will start out with Board Member Rogers. Board Member Rogers.
Yes.
Board Member Jensen.
Yes.
Board Member Lamone.
Yes.
Board Member Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. And I'll ask for a motion-
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn from our-
I think we have approved minutes.
We need to approve as well.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the June 20th, 2023 meeting minutes.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now I ask for a motion to adjourn from our-
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
From our redevelop-
From our RDA?
For our RDA. And second by Councilmember Lamone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned and ask for a motion to reconvene.
Make a, I'll make a motion to reconvene as a city council.
Okay, we are now reconvened as a count and we didn't need a motion on that. So we can, so we'll now go back and finish our final items on our budget. So-
On the what?
On our items, on our agenda here. And we didn't have a work session, so is there any of the directors that have anything they would like to come and address the council with this evening? Please come forward. Megan's shaking her head, no. Chief? I don't want everybody to rush the podium at one time.
Our hearts are with you, Chief.
Thank you. Yeah, just, just a short update on the incident down in Santaquin. Our, our agency has been involved to a small degree in support of Santaquin PD and the officers down there. I did watch this incident unfold Saturday morning. Happened pretty quick actually. Just oriented a caller, calling dispatch, just making all kinds of confusing reports. Thought somebody was hanging on the back of a semi as he was driving down the road. Mentioned Hells Angels and stuff like that, some paranoia there. So when they found him, they made a traffic stop, UHP did. And Santaquin assisted down there, made contact with him. There was another person in the, in the semi. She exited and then as they tried to assess what was going on, the driver started taking off again in the semi. In pretty quick fashion, he made a, made a U-turn right there on the freeway with his semi and went back in the direction of the officers and, and hit one and killed him. And then he abandoned that truck flat on foot, stole another semi, took that to Mona, dumped that, stole a pickup, went to Mount Pleasant, dumped that, stole another one. Went to Vernal, so the manhunt lasted probably four or five hours. They spotted him just before Vernal. UHP did a pretty good job in, in the pursuit. Ended up pitting the individual about 100 miles an hour. Took him into custody. So a situation that was horrific, probably could have been much worse, but it's a, it's one of those that doesn't always happen some other place. Now it's happened here. And it's a, it's a kind of a punch to the gut, to our department and, and all involved. But we will weather this like all the other stuff that happens in our society. So, so yeah, evil is still here. We'll combat that. Our officers are on top of things. They're certainly cognizant of what exists every day when they put on that uniform. But we have had some involvement. We've had some exposure to the horrificness of this, of this tragedy and we'll, we'll continue for the next week in support of that family. And that officer will be laid to rest next Monday. Funeral services 10:00 AM next Monday down at UVU. And we'll be supportive of that, those proceedings down there as well. And I think we're helping out with a couple of items of business down in the city of Santaquin this week in preparation for that. So that's what's going on. A shout out to the fire department and other employees of the city that also, that also responded down there in support of the, the two processions. One that escorted the officer's body to the medical examiner's office and then yesterday as they transported him back to the town of Santaquin. We had great support. Fire department and other employees had just lined the overpasses. Every overpass from probably 45th South all the way down to Santaquin was just filled with citizenry and employees and fire departments, stuff like that. So about the time you think that society doesn't have much support, there was actually quite a bit. Geneva Rock, Point of the Mountain did quite a demonstration with their cement trucks in support of, of that procession. So, and, and many others. So kind of solemn situation. Not the first. Be nice if it was the last, but we'll, we'll see how that goes. So any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. No, thank you. Anyone else from the staff? Okay, with that, we'll turn to our, well, I'll ask our city administrator for our next council meeting.
Yeah, just a couple of items. We have a fire department recognition for a rescue they did a couple of weeks ago in Cedar Hills. We'll have Chief Ingam and talk a little bit about the incident. And then we have at least one particular firefighter we'd want to recognize. So we're going to do that in our work session. We also have an area entry sign for Cook Family Park that we have designed. We want council to give, take a look at, give some input on before we get that designed. So you'll see that also in our work session. I can't remember what we had for council meeting. Oh, sorry, Strawberry Days, Miss, Miss Pleasant Grove is going to, the royalty is going to come and introduce themselves at our council meeting in two weeks on the 21st. So that's it for our meeting. As far as calendaring, just a reminder, and they talked about this today. There is two meetings tomorrow at the school district offices to talk about the latest financials regarding the school district potential split. There's a meeting at two and one at four. And my understanding is it's the same information, so you can attend either one of those. And then there is a ribbon cutting for CC Bank just over, they're on State Street, just down by Domino's and Jimmy John's. I don't know, Eric, do you have anything you need to add on that?
It's going to be big. This, if you don't want to miss one, this is it. A lot of dignitaries will be in attendance. What?
No, this one, it's Friday at two. So I, I put, I've sent an appointment out for that. It's in your calendar. Same with both the Alpine School District meetings. You have those in your calendar as well. We have our Fox Hollow annual meeting with them is next Thursday, the 16th at 6 o'clock. At Fox Hollow, I've sent that appointment out as well for your calendars. And then I'll send an email out tomorrow, but I'll be gone starting tomorrow at noon and we'll be gone rest of the week. So if you guys can get the school district stuff resolved in the next three and a half days, I'd appreciate it, so.
In your dreams.
Yeah, that's right.
If, if, if we only knew what we could vote for, I think that would be the half of the battle.
Sorry, I didn't mean to open up a discussion on that.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Sid? Eric?
I just have a two-year-old grandson that is obsessed with fire trucks, police trucks, and skid steers. So I may call on Chief, Chief Mayor to see if I can find a skid steer somewhere.
I have a skid steer at the farm.
Okay. Well, we made, I made, I'll probably text you.
I got a Mini-X now too, I'll convert into a Mini-X.
No, so that's all. I just, yeah, just, he's, he's with me all week, so I need to keep him busy.
Give me a call, I'm around.
Thanks, guys.
So with that, thank-
I just, I just wanted to, there was a couple of comments by the public about the district meeting. I just would encourage anybody who wasn't present to go watch that meeting because I think it actually was pretty clearly laid out why entering into an interlocal was probably a bad idea. It wasn't a hasty decision. We've had discussion on it and I think that we understand the options as they exist right now. We've done a lot of research and a lot of work on this. So if you have individual questions about that, public, I know there's not a lot here, but if you're watching, then we encourage you to engage with the Alpine School District in that process. And-
Can I just say, Councilmember Rogers, that is on the Orem City website. So they have it posted. If people want to watch that meeting, it is now on their website.
And I think with our statement, we also put the dates of the Alpine School District meetings, public hearing meetings also. So that information's out there.
Yeah, there was, there was one board member, well, there's multiple more board members. But if you're confused as to why our position is what it is, Board Member Wilson gave a wonderful presentation that I would just kind of copy verbatim and ditto it here because that, that will help you understand why our position is what it is. So I'd encourage you to do some of that work, look into it, and that will help you understand why we're united as Pleasant Grove in, in the best decision for what we think is, is moving forward in that.
Thanks, Steve. Perfect.
Yeah, well, thank you, councilman, and thank you for your time at the meeting today. I think it was well-spent and our position was known, but we've still got a long road to go and, and our residents will have an opportunity to have a vote. And we just need to make sure they get themselves educated and we help them with that on, on what they want to do. And so we'll, we'll do our part in that. And it would be for best for what all of us in the Alpine School District, especially for our children in Pleasant Grove. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Rogers.